Anything you want to say? Did you ski today, yesterday, tonight? Yeah. Let's hope it doesn't rain all of this nice snow. All right, um, approve the minute of January twenty first. I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I second it.
Any discussion of the... Can't operate my pages, don't mind me.
Do you, do you need one?
I have, I don't, yeah, thank you.
I guess I'll take that one. So I don't have to leave on my phone.
No, I, I'm not that I know.
Seeing none, should I give you a minute?
I'm good.
You're good. Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Town meeting preparation. Um.
I don't... So, yeah.
Yep.
And, other than that, thinking about what you talked about last month, you're just gonna do like an...
A little update on...
Right.
Yeah.
Other than not having a budget tipper. So we're meeting on that Saturday, right?
Yes.
Yeah. The only addition that I had, and just thinking of what we just talked about, is that if, maybe we should make aware the community on our work on trauma and how the staff, like, you know, that was a great opportunity for them to know and be informed and ask questions, what better time than getting them there that would be...
That work is going to come out in the town report, so I'd be happy to, if it were to answer any questions if they come up.
Yeah. That'd be great.
They, so they'll have something they will have read by then on the work.
Yeah. So we could make it...
It's always worth actually saying something.
Yeah, so we could make it like part of our little cheat sheet or whatever.
Yeah.
We're gonna use, so the slideshow, few words from you and the work that is being done.
Sure.
I think it would be really great for them to know how many teachers from Eastmont Player are involved in that.
Cause it's a lot.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah.
There's actually a wait list.
Yeah.
I didn't say anything in the big meeting, but I just want to say again how grateful I am that you guys are doing that work.
Yeah.
It's really important work.
Yeah.
Moving out of the punishment paradigm and to something more constructive is really...
So I had a question about that as well, or not a question, because I, I love the work, but how do you balance the effects that outbursts have on the other kids versus the the, uh, the needs of that child, just remain in the classroom of those children?
That's a really, yeah, that's a very, very tricky one, cause it, that's having an impact, like, that could be traumatizing everyone in that classroom. Um, and that's something, and it's great that you're here. Uh, that's something we talk about and struggle with all the time. And, and I think, you know, we always have to be cognizant of it, but then there's also sometimes a classroom where there's more sensitive kids, right, that, that have an impact. Um, it's teaching a lot of empathy towards that student, and it's also knowing when to remove that student, like, when, you know, there's times when we need to have empathy, and then there's times when we just can't impact everyone's learning.
Well, and you have to have empathy for the larger group.
Exactly.
Right, it's tricky.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
So I think one of the things that I would update, knowing was the fact that, um, a lot of the outbursts and disruptions are public. So, you can have class-wide conversations, you know, if a student has to leave, the teacher can sit down with that class and say, wow, that just happened, how's everyone feeling? Do you have any questions? So it's not a, it's not a private thing that happens to all of us.
Mm-hmm.
And I always encourage teachers to process with kids if and when we have to leave, you know, a student has to leave. And then if parents bring up individual concerns with kids that are really affected by things, I'll always meet with them and their child, try to figure out why, share as much information as I can, you know, confidentialize and try to reassure that student.
So just to be clear, you guys know I'm in the, I'm around quite often, and I completely appreciate how you guys are handling, how you guys handle these situations, and it just, I, I've been thinking about it quite a bit, cause I, you know, like, we've had interactions where I know a student was struggling and you came in and didn't remove him, because we'd got, you know, he'd kinda, the student had kinda settled a little bit on his own and, or with help. And I just wanted you guys to know that I do appreciate it, but it just made me think about, how do you balance that?
It's tricky, and it's, and it's always case by case and moment by moment, but I think what Michael was talking about, that's been a huge mind shift for us, because in the past, we've always wanted to protect that student or protect the class, and it's like unmentionable, right, you just don't talk about it, but everybody sees it and knows it. Um, and we even had to have a conversation with a sixth grade student this year who had an outburst to say, so we have to talk to the class about this, and the student was really upset, and we said, it wasn't a secret, they all saw what he did. Like, we, we, in order to build and repair relationships, we have to acknowledge it and talk about it and get, so it has been a huge, a huge mind shift for...
And there's that empathy piece as well, you know, there's a student, a young student this last week, that the mother said was really upset, and he, he wasn't upset because of the child's behavior, he was upset because he wanted, what could he do to help that child act like that?
Mm-hmm. That's amazing.
So it was like almost a full three sixty on, on why that student was upset, which is amazing. I think our kids do an incredible job of empathizing with the kids of all different situations in our school, and I think building that as opposed to shushing it out and talking about it.
Trying to write it.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Right.
And as they grow, if those kids understand that they have some issues and are empathetic and don't trigger them, um, you see that sometimes when kids will push buttons, we're talking about how that's not helpful, how to...
Kids push buttons?
So...
Come on now.
Adults?
I think the other thing is just communicating with families, if your child is being impacted, talk to us, let us know. We had, actually happened, um, in a classroom this week where the teacher and a set of parents talked about their, their little, um, young student who was really struggling and starting to develop his own behaviors, just because he was so confused by what he was seeing and couldn't process it, and so we've gotta, right, we wouldn't have known otherwise if the parent hadn't talked to us. Um, so just keeping those lines of communication open, like, let the teacher know, call one of us, um, because we don't always know the impact, right? Like, we're, even the adults, you know, don't always quite know the best way to handle it after the fact, after an episode happens, or, you know, there's a big blowout, or, you know, you see Michael hearing a student down the hall, like, it, it can be upsetting, and if we don't know that someone is impacted, we can't help them. But it's been great work, and, um, we were kinda jokingly telling Kat to go up, because she's been so involved in this for so long, and with her counselor background, and for most of us, it's new learning. Like, we're, it's, it's thinking differently about how we've always done things, which is exciting, and we're seeing, we're seeing impacts on teachers, just the way that they're totally shifting the way they respond to
Awesome.
Different behaviors, yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Anything else for town meeting? I'll have everything set for you for Saturday, you'll need the mic, are you gonna do, are you doing a slide?
What's over?
I don't know, I, no, I don't, I don't think we do.
No, I think we're not. Yeah.
Um.
So it'll be just the mic?
I, I guess that's a little bit of a question, I mean, we could do it without presenting a budget.
Yes, there's no reason we can't do it, because... Yeah.
Um...
We could still show where are we putting the money and just make sure, and just make sure that we're keeping the pies, where we wanna keep showing that we're, most of the money is going to instructional pie and not everywhere else, so
Yep.
we could do a smaller version of, you know, your presentation, just to, as the information.
Yeah. Yep.
I think that was, that's gonna be the tricky part.
Yeah.
Cause you did all the work, I mean, so you, you are recommending.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, we've recommended a budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh...
So, yeah, maybe you should...
It may, it may be a good idea to, to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so...
A small version of your usual version.
Right. Okay.
And if there's anything you need, just let me know.
Um, I guess just when the slideshow is...
I'll send it to you.
Is, is Lori working on it, or are you working on it?
I'm only doing the, the amazing things that have happened with this whole slideshow.
Okay.
Not the...
Not the, okay, so I'll...
No, 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 just the photos, just the photos.
I can ask Lori what, I don't know what's happening with all of that.
I'll ask Lori.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll try and turn that around fast. It's the middle of February already.
Okay.
Anything else on Act forty six? Sorry, town meeting.
It was like, what?
Trying to move us.
Right.
That was a quick discussion.
Right. Okay, they're gonna move us to Act forty six now. Okay, everybody good?
Good.
Yes.
I, I, I think we should be prepared for answering some hard questions that, that day, you know, especially knowing that, you know, Berlin and Callas are now putting their budgets to, to vote.
Yep.
Yeah, so, you know, so just having a quick cheat sheet, and we are putting that article in the signpost with Eddie that it was a, you know, a collaboration. People, I, I was a little afraid of putting something out after the last article, cause we, it might be all not right by the time it...
Right.
Right, cause it completely changed, I know.
When does this come out?
Completely changed by the time it, by, by the time it, it comes out.
When does it come out?
Yeah, it'll come out right before town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right before town meeting, so, so it's not very, right, just the last week of February is when it comes out, so it might be completely out of date, but I think after this February nineteenth meeting, that would happen or not happen on Tuesday, and we'll see how it would happen now.
Yeah.
We will...
Unless something drastic happens on Friday, which would be surprising.
Yeah, so Friday is the hearing, the first hearing, but I can't imagine that he's gonna do something, that the judge will do something right away, so it just still has to, well, it's, it's forced, but, but it still leaves us all in limbo, which is the part I'm not so...
Well, I, I mean, we are and we aren't. There's, uh, uh, this is my editorial a little bit, but I think there's a lot more sense of being in limbo than we actually are. I mean, the reality is that, from an operational perspective, at this point, nothing has changed.
Yeah, but we're not...
There's a whole bunch of things that are happening in the background, and I but none of them have turned into something that anybody has to do anything about.
Yet.
Yet.
But we, you know, we don't have a date to vote in order to have agreement, we don't, you know, like, we, we don't have certainly in anything, we're, our, our school is not putting a budget to vote, so
Yeah.
so we're assuming the process is going, I feel very much in limbo.
So, my, right, so my perspective, I know what I, you know, and I think a lot of the, the community maybe was confused as well by the article that said, there's, you know, the postponement. Like, to me, it wasn't super clear that, you know, it still had to go through the Senate and the government, you know what I mean, like, it seemed like...
It was not presented... It missed important details.
Details, exactly, and, so I think, I think that's why there's, there's a feeling of limbo.
Yeah.
To me.
Right.
So if that, if that passed the Senate, we would be in the category B, which means that it would give us a whole extra year to put our...
Agreed. But unless and until that happens, so that we can waste another year
To talk more.
getting nowhere and talking about all the ways that we can't work together.
So...
Um, uh, there, it doesn't, it doesn't require anything of this board. I, I guess, like, just to oversimplify, this board has, has no change of course.
Right.
Just like we've had no change of course, with the exception of the delay of the organizational meeting
Right.
and the election of the, of the new board, that's the only sort of operational thing.
Well, and the budget.
And what happens?
And from this board, but, but the budget, our process as a board hasn't changed from the budget perspective.
Well, it kind of has, because we were, you know, we normally present a budget for the voters on town meeting day, we did not do that. If anything changes, we then have to, to then present the budget to the town.
Right, but what I'm saying is that this, my expectation has been right along that we, as a board, would not present a budget on town meeting day, and that was a conversation that we had last month. And, nothing has come, like, there's things moving, and I can acknowledge that, but nothing has, has solidified to the point where that course of action has changed.
Agreed, agreed.
It, it's sort of like what Bill was saying, if and when something changes, then we will address, we'll, we'll address that. And personally, for me, unless and until something changes, just moving ahead. Because trying to anticipate all of the possible eventualities is crazy-making, and I just have no desire to do it, I, I don't think it's constructive. And I think it just further muddies the water. There's, there's enough confusion out there, I think what we can do is be very clear about what our process is, and not be reactionary to the various machinations that are going on out there, unless and until we have to.
I was gonna say, with, as long as we have the ability to respond when asked questions about those potential.
Uh, yeah, I mean, the, the stuff is out there and it's happening, we, we don't know what, if anything, they will mean for this board.
I wonder if after Friday and or Tuesday, if something were to change, it would make sense to call another meeting before that Saturday, so you could talk about that.
Yeah.
Perhaps.
Yeah, just so that...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, if...
That's a good idea.
If that happens, right, you go as you're planning, and if something does change, to be prepared so that you don't get there feeling like, oh...
Yep. Right, the one thing that we can do via email is set up a meeting.
Yeah.
So, if news comes down that we need to adjust and get our ducks in a row, then by all means, at that point, we would meet.
So, we should definitely plan that.
Yeah, we should definitely. So, do we know if Lindy wants to run for the transition, uh, for the, the board? That's right.
I assume so, but I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I was just gonna offer to
Yeah.
s- help speed line, speed the signatures and do what I did with Stephen, and just take it, take the forms to the school.
Does she need to do, go through that, is that what needs to happen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but we can have the forms soon after the nineteenth.
Oh, I thought we, I thought you said tonight that you could have them earlier than that.
I, I thought I just, cause I just asked Rosie, and she's in, you know, saying, no, we can't have them until then, I thought that tonight, no, we can't have them until the nineteenth.
I thought Bill said we could have them before, because it's such a timeline.
You don't date the
Right.
petition.
Oh, oh, no, you're right, yeah, so we can't give the petition for you yet, however, I can give you one and be collecting sign, signatures.
Right.
Is it for you and Lindy?
We don't know about Lindy for sure.
Well, I think it, the conversation was two meetings ago, she wanted it.
It was that... Then she wanted it, yeah, yeah, and our, if we are able to pass our inclusive agreement, our hope is that we would have three people, not two.
But not this year.
But not this year, it will be until the next year.
So I'll email her if you want me to get your signatures at the school.
You were a rock star.
You were a rock star, yeah.
I was like, sorry.
But I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to spool.
Wait till, what, this is on Monday if you'd like, or Tuesday?
Tuesday, right.
But now that I know, I think I'm gonna stop at Rosie's tomorrow and try to do some tomorrow at lunch.
Oh, yeah, that's another, I live somewhere in London.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
That's what I was thinking, I'll be there most of the day tomorrow, or most of the afternoon, well, maybe.
Oh, you'll be there, oh, so I'll hang out with you tomorrow. I'm sorry.
Well, I'll be there, it'll be an unwarranted meeting.
Unwarranted meeting.
Yeah, so get one for Lindy too, and I'll, I'll email her and mention it.
Okay. Yeah.
We'll make sure to sit at different tables.
We're not, we're, no, I thought that they'd pass something, and that we can be up there at the same time.
Laura's coming to the third serving, so maybe you can come to the first one.
First one.
Right.
I am, that's the one, I'm the first here.
There you go.
Yeah. But I should get there early though, cause the first two are the most attended, so I can get this.
Okay.
Okay, back to, sorry.
Back to, have, have we talked about Act forty six enough?
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, well, I guess I could ask one question, how do, do you guys feel about the, I talked to you, you were even about it, the delay or not delay, it's, we are, you know, since I'm part of the VSA, I'm like, always sort of, and I'm in the executive committee, I end up having to give input, and, um, if you guys are feeling that, you know, we're not doing that...
We said, or shouldn't delay?
They, well, the Senate is gonna, eh, accept testimony on if they should delay or not delay, the, so extend a year.
Do not extend it.
That was my vote.
Yeah.
I wanna get, I'd like to move forward.
Just get it done, okay. So you don't feel misrepresented?
Right.
Good.
Don't extend it. We've had three years to talk about all the ways that we can't make it work, another year is not going to change anybody's position.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, administration, everybody has read the administration report, do you have anything to add?
Hmm, I don't have anything to add, I don't know if you have any questions about anything. I think I have. I was a little, I could add, I was a little bit late tonight, um, because we were, so we are doing a twelve-hour training, and it's called the math menu, which is really just a kind of like the readers and writers workshop model for math, and that is going on at school right now, um, from three to seven, so I was trying to stay version as I could tonight. I don't know if there's any questions.
I didn't have any.
Do you have any question, I, I, I guess my only question was, are, eh, I guess this might be one of the last reports that we're seeing like this, but are, eh, remember the other kind of report I used to do too with the red and the, where things are, do we get to see that again, or is it pretty much just...
Sounds like CIP.
Um, that was based on the continuous improvement plan, which is now like one plan for the whole district, so it's not as easy to, so what I've tried to do is, is make the, the bold, the bullets under each of the bold, the bold is our implementation plan.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I see.
So I've kind of shifted, because our, our CIP kind of shifted into the implementation plan, um, so I tried like comprehensive, um, the balanced assessment system, scoring and reporting, responsive classroom PBIS, that's kind of ha, the framework, but if you like the table format better, I'm happy to do that. It just doesn't, our CIP doesn't look the same as it used to, with those clear dates.
It was just easier to, you know, I like the narrative, but it was just easier to see where, where we are to asking questions, but, yeah.
It was, it was, I, I, it was easy for me to do as well, but because the CIP isn't quite so, um, at the discrete level anymore, it's broader, it was, I couldn't really say, like, by June, this was gonna happen.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Biscuit report?
So you'll notice there are some changes, um, there's a whole lot of January updates, I can walk through those, Lori shared, cut a big picture with all of you. Shared the details, so, on the first page, and I'm not sure what page it is in the big picture.
It's nineteen?
Nineteen.
Eighteen, actually. No, nineteen, sorry.
Yes, so all the Jan, I, gee, is it helpful, do you want me to just run through all of the January updates?
Sure, quickly, yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay, I don't, I don't think it'll take long, but the interest income is just, so, I think what Bill had Lori do is do a projection of what end of year closing would look like based on where we are right now.
Mm-hmm.
So that's just a projection of the, on, based on the interest rates and spending, that seventeen thousand five hundred forty-five dollars. Um, the next one down, Lori talked to tonight, that's the, um, the shared benefits, like, she gave the example of Callis and Eastmont Player share staff. Um, Sam Nishkin is a good example of that, so Sam, her FTEs is higher at Eastmont Player than Callis, so we pay and Callis reimburses, um, and you'll...
Is it still, or, is it still higher at the Eastmont Player to be removed?
A little bit.
Okay.
Callis has, has, um, slightly less than us, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the next one down, um, reimbursements, same thing. Um, this was, I think, um, looking at WCSU costs and updating just where we're at, um, for the WCSU budget. The, do you have, mine may have been an older version, I'm a little bit curious.
Yeah, no, those, well, those income reimbursements are, um, the special ed reimbursements are ones for the local, for the local special ed staff that run through the Eastmont Player budget, and the miscellaneous income reimbursements are changing, there's, there's other than just special ed from, uh, S, S U special ed staff,
Right.
but there are other little reimbursements in there for their income as well, as well as miscellaneous, it's not just special education primarily being that though.
Yeah, so special ed has its, its own line underneath, and that's...
That's for the local, the one above, it's for, remember the special educators, the special educators, the speech-language pathologists, they work through Washington Central.
WCSU.
So there was more reimbursement there that came to Eastmont Player, there was less expense basically, so you get some money back.
Um, and then looking at the, um, expense changes, you'll see the salary and benefit update, um, shared benefits, so this is all from hiring, Lori cleaned up from all of our new hires, and, and who took benefits and who didn't, and all of that, so that's, um, that's that update under the expense changes. We had three, I think, three additional pre-K students that were budgeted for, and that's like such a shot in the dark, we never know who's gonna take the, the reimbursement and who's not, so that's the cost for that. And then the, we had a, just a whole bunch of work done to the building in the fall, painting, um, repairs, maintenance. And those are the changes now, um...
So, this might seem like a silly question two years in, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. So that first, that first section, revenue changes, why does the projected budget go up there, but but down on that line below?
So, you'll see some of those go together, so you, like, are you looking at like the third one up from the bottom in the revenue, miscellaneous income, shared benefits?
No, she's looking at the fund.
Looking at the...
The voter approval versus the projected adjusted budget?
Okay, so what's happening is, you'll see there's about twenty thousand dollar, we have more revenue than we think.
Okay.
So we're expecting that projected is to be higher.
And that's okay, because it's income.
Okay.
The expense side, we can't change, we actually went down in expense
Okay. Right.
by a little over eighty thousand dollars.
So, okay. So, okay.
Okay.
Right.
Got it. So what we're actually spending is the next, the full, the second.
Yeah.
And...
The, the difference will give you what the current, see that subtotal on the fund balance?
Yeah. The difference between the two.
Well, you have, yeah, yeah, some of those, the difference between the two is twenty eight, nine, and then what you have left over from the previous year's projected fund balance, and then we have reserve for technology, cause we use a technology fund that
Right.
so you never have the peaks and valleys, it's just capital, just like we do with capital, uh, same idea as capital budget, we capitalize technology.
Right.
And then, um, you as board elected to take care of a teacher's retirement package, so that's why that gets one of those.
So our budgeting, just if I'm understood, is basically an expense budget, correct?
Yeah.
And then, what we're looking at here is, the, the revenue side is, we've got revenue from the state, we get revenue from the local, right?
Yeah.
We got reimbursements, all of the bits and pieces, so
Yeah.
ideally that actual should be the same or higher, cause it's money coming in, and the other side should be the same or lower.
Yeah. Okay.
And I, well, Alicia and I would never do anything beyond a voter-approved budget unless authorized by the board, so we'd ask you to authorize us to spend, and the audit will look for that actual minutes that you authorized us to spend beyond that.
Right.
Otherwise, we can't do it.
Cool, thanks for explaining.
And we always try to keep the target at four percent.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, four, five, six. Ruben, I came in because your negotiation rep... Ruben, I came in because your negotiation rep was not at, couldn't be here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I would be glad, and I did it with one other board, to go into executive session and give you the details of dividend, the general session, about negotiations, if you so choose. You don't want the details, it's fine, we can do it.
I wouldn't mind them, but.
Uh, I'm not opposed to getting them. I mean, we're going to get them.
Once they get, once we get a printed copy.
Uh, no, let's, alright, let's do that. Let's, let's be, now we have considered it as a board and, um, okay, so we don't have a board order.
No, there's, there's a one for Eastmont player, remember?
So I'm just, I'm thinking about, like, if we're gonna go into executive session, we can let these folks go and, not make you come back.
We wanna finish everything with that.
Yeah, exactly. Well, we're, we're there.
Yeah.
Do, do you wanna ask Bill about the discussion around town meeting and, uh, while he's here?
Um, so we had a brief conversation about slides and so we're doing the presentation that we do every year. And then we sort of wandered off into the, should we do the slides like we normally do, and it seems like we should. Even though we're not approving a budget or giving a budget to the voters for approval, we can still talk about the process and, um, and I think we've probably set that expectation, um, maybe not completely intentionally, but we've set that expectation that, um, we would do that.
So I had to make a decision with Lori, uh, looking at her workload.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not supporting any board. Doesn't mean you can't make one, I know you've been helping, you can make a power point, so.
Mm-hmm.
I'd be glad to, you know, you have the information, I can find you more information, but as usual, usually at central office, we, you probably do the most of any board yourself, Ruben. Uh, preparing your own slides. Well, we'll see, we'll see all the way to, here it is, just do the narration.
Yeah, Lori's done that for the last year or two, so.
So she does not have the time right now to do that.
That's, that's fine.
Make a workload call, unfortunately.
Um, so then I will, I will get last year's presentation.
Yeah, and we, and we talked about modify.
Ask you for the CLA.
And all that stuff, I teach in that, so.
Dollar yield and budget numbers and, I mean, we can.
Yeah, and simplify, like we said, you know, like, I think the most important is.
And sensing a theme, yes.
The pie, the pie of how we.
Chart that shows where the money goes is there.
Instruction. So don't like kill yourself, you know, that's what I'm trying to say, you know, just like simplify it. Yeah.
No problem. Okay. Okay, so I will make sure that I make myself a calendar item to spend a couple hours on that.
If we can do that next week.
It's not happening this week, so.
It's not this week either? I'm just trying not to, uh, I will be working during vacation, but I'm trying not to do that.
Right. No, I, I mean, normally I try to get the narration done early in vacation so that it's there and out there, so. Um, and I will make sure that I run it by.
Do we have a timeline Saturday, that Saturday?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, or nine thirty or nine?
On Tuesday or Saturday?
Saturday. Uh, now you're making me doubt. Was it nine or nine thirty? I'm always there at eight thirty, I don't know.
Uh, nine is close enough.
Nine, yeah.
Good enough.
Okay.
Just a way.
Okay. Um, so, yeah.
Can I ask you a question, Bill, about, cause we said that, you know, we might get some questions that day about Act forty-six anyway, so, how does, eh, Berlin and Callas come to the decision on voting on their budget?
How, they decided, they had discussion about it, decided to do it.
Okay.
That's really all I can say is.
Okay.
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 My, those excited discussion, you said me too.
That's good. I just didn't know if there was anything.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I think that brings us to the last piece, which is to do an executive session to talk about contract negotiations, which I will move us into at seven thirty-eight. I would take a motion to move us to executive session.
I'll make a motion to move us to executive.
A second.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Trying to write and I can't like run it all at the same time, man.
I think they wanna see how quickly they can get out of here.
Yeah, okay.